We will call the January 23, 2023 Board of Education Work Session to order. We do have a quorum, and I will ask at this time Dr. Helen Lindsey to lead our infocation.
Let us pray. Almighty and Everlasting God, I have no father, we thank you for your protection each and every day. But today I ask you to guide us as we take on this task at hand that we got our thoughts and minds that will do what's right by the kids and families in Granville County Public School System. Go with us and stand by us. These are things as you press the honorable name. Amen.
Amen.
Next, I will ask Mrs. Danielle Hayes if she will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which is safe, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice strong.
I'd like to welcome everybody here today and those that may be listening by live stream. We have basically two items to cover in our agenda, so we will be getting to those momentarily. The first item for review is a resolution about changing school board seat districts, I mean terms from six years to four years. And I think Attorney Dubison is going to maybe share with us a little update on that and how that's going to work.
Sure. So, Board members, the, as you know, the school board has been promoting local legislation to convert from six years to four years, which is your last step in this process. And I know that your House representatives have been contacted, and I believe state senator as well, to initiate that process. And there was interest in having some sort of formal statement of the board that they could have and have in committee and so forth. So, that is what this is. I just tried to sort of draft the timeline of where we are, so that it's documentation that the legislators can have.
A copy of the resolution is in your folder, if you want to read through it. As we talked about it before, the six years came from a consent decree many, many years ago, and Attorney Dubison took the necessary steps to have that requirement removed. And now we just need to have it handled by our North Carolina Legislature for it to be effective at the next election cycle, which would be in 24?
2024.
2024. Does anybody have any questions about it? Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt it?
I'll do that. Make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Madam Chair, could I make a, just a brief comment before we get started?
Yes.
Today, this month being School Board Appreciation Month, I would just like to recognize all the appreciation that we got the other day from our staff, especially the students that was fond enough to make cards and all their good stuff. I enjoyed the reading, and I just think they need to know that we do appreciate it. I do appreciate it, and I'm sure the rest of the board members do also. And I just wanted to let the, I just need to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. I know we all enjoyed the recognition and the sweet gifts that came along with it. We did have one student that wants us to approve cell phones for every student in the school system. I'm not sure if his parents won't buy it or not, but I'm, I just kind of got a real laugh out of that one. Also, in your folders, you will see an invitation if you're able to go listen to our students in the Virtual Enterprise Program, do a presentation so they can practice before they go to competition. So, you want to take a look at that, and also the program for my winter graduation as a memento. And I also included in your folder a handout from School Board Association talking about the Code of Ethics, and I thought maybe it would be something you might want to look at before we get back in February and attack our policy manual again and work with that. Okay, moving right along, the next item is the consideration of the closure of Creemore Elementary School of the Arts and the relocation of the Holly Middle School students to that campus. As you know, we had the public hearing, we all heard comments from many speakers, and we have gotten some emails as well. So, today's meeting and the rest of our work session will be devoted to discussing any issues, questions we have, and seeing if we want to move forward with making a decision Dr. McLean, did you have someone that was going to provide us a little additional information at this time?
Yes, ma'am. At the public hearing, it was mentioned and questioned about the traffic flow. So, we've asked Mr. Bill Graham and Mr. Chris, I'm sorry, Dr. Chris Hamm, to bring forth the little information, what they have thus far concerning the traffic in that area between Creedmore Elementary and South Granville High School, just as a point of information at the current time. Gentlemen, we turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm.
Thanks, Chris. And so, my part of this is dealing with the issue of the traffic on 56, the drop off with having the two schools in such close proximity. What does that look like? And we know that it could be nightmarish. So, I reached out to Department of Transportation, and I'm happy to say that everyone I spoke with was great about getting back to me immediately. I thought maybe I'd have to wait. So, we have an, we actually have a meeting set for Tuesday at 10:00 to discuss this, and it's several levels of folks involved with this, traffic management, and a couple supervisors in that department. So, I also want to give thanks to Chief King because he gave me the right person to call. So, thanks, Chief King, for that. So, I will, again, as Chris said, I will keep everyone apprised of the developments with that. So, Board, I just wanted you to know that we recognize that there, that this is one of the challenges that we have, and we are on it, and we'll keep you up to date as we go forward. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Okay.
Okay, as we move forward, I know all of you have probably spent quite a bit of time thinking about what we've heard, the comments we've gotten, and the studies. I would just say, has anybody got any particular questions of our staff right now that they feel like they need answered? Give it time to do that.
I heard an interesting question brought up about the gym doors at Creedmore Elementary. Is that, that they don't lock? And is that something that we were already aware of, or is that something that would be addressed in the renovation?
Correct. And that was taken, we took a look at that Friday to make sure that was squared away.
I figured.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to object. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I did hear at that meeting, Chair Percy Williams, that they would like to have some type of organization that will study how we would use the existing Holly campus, the building that's good, how can we still have life at camps even though we're going to close the campus down in the upcoming school year. Could there be a committed form that will look at how would that campus be used when the kids be transferred to a new location?
You'll have to address the mics within six inches or so.
I'm sorry.
If I turn up any louder, it'll howl.
Okay, as I was saying.
You might just want to repeat it, that'll be fine.
Yeah. If we were try to have a committee or some type of organization that will look at how we would use the existing Holly campus, building that's good, they had to keep life there, and I guess have some legacy still in that area there. I think his granddaughter brought that to our attention when she spoke, Linda Edwards, at the, this hearing, the site last week.
Anyone else want to make a comment?
Yes, I'd like to just comment on what Dr. Lindsey had said. When we were having the discussion about doing this, there was some concern about what we would do with the campus there. And we had some discussion about using, the school system using the eighth grade wing in the cafeteria for something that the school system could do there, and also have something that the community could also use there. And I think this committee that she talked about was talked about at that time, to have the community, if we do this, have a role in how we use the campus if the students are gone. So, I think that's a part of what the plans are if we move that in that direction.
It's my understanding that there is absolutely no reason for anyone, if this were to be voted on today, that would be out of a job, because we have plenty of openings, and we have, I would think we would be able to try to strategically place these teachers and teacher assistants and staff with kids coming from their schools. I know a lot of concern about the younger kids and being in a strange environment. So, I think it's going to be really important, if we do this, that we really give a lot of thought to how teachers are assigned to these children and how they're placed. So, that's one concern I have. Also, our pre-K class, we, I think we need to think about exactly how we want to do that, too. So, I don't know that that's something we would have to even think about deciding at this point, but that's just some things that we will need to take in consideration if we move forward with this.
One of the things that I wanted to point out and just, I don't know, maybe say out loud so that everybody knows kind of where, where I'm coming from, is, you know, none of us has a crystal ball, so we don't, we can't foresee, you know, all of the growth that's going to happen in the county. But we did have the zoning and planning boards from Butler and Oxford and the county come to the work session, you know, and present their updates, which I found to be very valuable. And after talking to some Creedmore City Commissioners and representatives from Seguasa, you know, I think it says a lot when they have zero projected growth within the city limits of Creedmore for the next five years, because Seguasa has no allocation for sewer, for residential, for five years. And I think that's a really important number for us to take into consideration, and it just makes me feel a little bit better about the decision that we're, that we're kind of leaning towards. Because, you know, when we heard from the county, they said the majority of the building permits are coming from the southern part of the county, south of Wilton. And so, you know, I know a lot of people at the public hearing brought up, you know, why aren't you looking at this school, or, you know, this other school, or whatever? And it's not an easy decision, but we have to base it on the information that we're given. And so, I just wanted to say, like, that's, that's all that we're trying to do, is make the best decision possible for all the students and staff.
I would concur with what Ms. Hayes says. You're right, we have no crystal ball, but we know the growth is coming, we just don't really know when and how fast. And it could very well be more in the Butler Stadium area than in the Creedmore area. And a lot will depend on that water system. And also, Oxford is experiencing some growth. So, it's sort of a transitional period, I think we could say we're in right now with the school system. We have to play the cards we're dealt, so to speak. And with the funding issues that we have, this seems to make a lot of sense. And it's, as Mr. Peace has said quite a few times, it's probably the least disruptive. I'm sure the people that it would occur to may not feel that way, but I think it can be made to be a smooth transition. I really do.
Madam Chair. I would just like to reiterate that we are here planning for next year, not five years, not three years. We're planning for next year. And based on the information that I've heard from each one of these board members, that is that we need to get students out of Holly. And I've also heard that from teachers and parents, and everybody knows that, that the longer we keep students in there, the more likely we're going to be, get sued over environmental issues anyway. We're sort of going in that direction, because with air handlers and all those things that we have in there, it's not going to get a whole lot better. We could probably put more in there. So, as we move forward, you know, I, you know, we've talked about this move being temporary or so forth. But my thing is to do what we need to do today for next school year, if we can do that. And if the county commissioners want to come up with 40 or 50 million dollars, we might want to do something different. But, you know, I'm a realist, too, even though we should ask the idea that, that we are going to get that. And at any rate, we need to get kids out of Holly now, so that even if they did, we talking about a couple of years down the road, if they gave us the money really to redo what we want to do with it. So, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to make a decision today, or to make a move, a motion today, but I need to, I don't want to do that until everybody has had an opportunity to have their say, because I don't want to shut anybody down.
I agree with that, because I think some people in the community get the wrong idea, saying we are, the school board, they are closing schools, and that's not quite what's going on here, based on the condition of the building there and what have you. In the past, when schools closed down based on number C, I think, as we all know, that schools are funded by A D M's average daily membership, and that's what funds our school here. So, I think the longer we let this lag on, maybe more misinformation may be shared and discussed within the homes throughout Granville County. So, we know that, and plus, once I hear Mr. Peace say that, I think we'll ask for, before I join the board here, the county commissioner to have fun with what's going on here right now here. But since they're not willing right now to provide stocks, that we need to, I guess, restore that school, then we have to find a place for our kids to learn in very safe or in loving environment.
Yes, I just want to say good afternoon to everyone. I spent quite a bit of time this weekend going back, and as everyone know, this has been going on, looking at, I think, every school have been looked at, really, one way or another with regards to this. And yes, we've narrowed it down now to the final with, and I'm not going to say we narrowed it down. What we're talking about and discussing now is the closing of Creedmore. I want to say that, you know, with the public hearing that we had, it is evident that the parents and the teachers, you know, love their Creedmore Elementary School. It is hard to make a decision, and I've said this before, you know, everyone loved their schools, especially the ones that have grown up in the community and everything and gone through the schools. So, we've gone through the process, went back through the studies, and I think almost every school have been looked at, maybe except West Oxford, or, you know, on the southern side, for sure. Also, it's evident that C G Holly, you know, must move to a new location, just like Mr. Peace just said. Hard decisions to be made, you know, and, you know, that's what I've been studying here with more and more looking at that, and also looking at the inadequacies of the middle school that we have with C G Holly. But also, and it's been brought up, and we've talked about it, with regards to the inadequacies also of Creedmore. And, you know, we've had Mr. Graham and others to tell us about the costs that's going to be associated, problems with the gym size, problem with the locker rooms and the sports facilities, the bathrooms at the, at the elementary schools where you have middle school students that will be moving there, the track and field facilities that are there, no areas for, I think, band and music and all of that. So, and, you know, it's just things that hard decisions will have to be made, but also considering the fact, you know, what's going to have to occur, too, with the cost that is going to be involved with, and having middle school students move to an elementary school. And we're not closing a school. I keep hearing about that, but no school is being closed. I know the facility itself is going to continue to be used, because we're moving people from Holly. And then we're also talking about repurposing Holly. So, that means that Holly is not going to be put on a block for, unless other discussions, but that the repurposing of Holly itself. But it's the moving of elementary students to other elementary schools, if we in fact then close down Creedmore. And hard decisions, I take it personally, because I know youth, our children, our future leaders, the impact it's going to make. And I've heard it said before, it's a lot easier for younger children to adjust to a movement than high school students, because we've looked at, come on, we've looked at South Granville, we've looked at Granville Central, and, you know, it's, it's a hard decision. And we are here today now narrowing it down to Creedmore, looking at, you know, what's going to be the different things that's going to have to occur there if this is going to happen. So, believe me, I've been thinking about this hard over the weekend, just wanted to let you know that it's there.
Dr. Frederick, did you have anything you'd like to add?
So, part of the things that I want to make, or at least heard to the public, to the board and everything, is that, at least in my experience in the last couple of months, I've felt a little back against the wall when it came to the ability to make a decision. In my, how I see it, part of the problem is not a funding issue, but a proactivity issue. I know we don't have crystal balls, but even if we had all the money in the world, we can't get those pipes and everything fixed, the problem at Holly, the facility's fixed by then. Now, when it comes to what our options are for consolidations and otherwise, part of the reason why we're left with the option that we are right now, and why we couldn't explore other more creative uses of facilities and all that kind of stuff, is because of the timeline that was requisite in order to make it so that next year, those kids are in a place that's safe for their health. That has been personally, you know, honestly, a little frustrating, because I'm sure there are very creative things that we can all come up with, and we can talk to the community about better uses for facilities, buildings, all those kinds of things, but we didn't have the time to make those decisions, because we didn't have the foresight not to have a crystal ball, because that's impossible, but to recognize that, like, all facilities, all buildings, all everything, has a normal degree of maintenance, just like our car needs oil changes, these buildings need maintenance. And I, as a new member to the board, I just think that we need to not end our approach of these uncomfortable conversations with whatever happens today, because we need to ensure that we continue conversations and continue looking forward such that two, four, six years from now, board members aren't sitting with their back up against a similar situation where they don't have choices, and then they are only left with one option, because that's, that's been the problem. So, I just think that I need to make sure that we know that we need to not end our uncomfortable conversations today in the next couple of months, because we need to make sure that board, because all of our goals should be to leave the board in a better place than we found it, leave the state of our education, our schools, our county in a place better than we found it. And if this stops with this, and us not trying to do that and leave our impact on the future and stuff, I feel like we are doing a disservice and just being reactive instead of proactive. So, to me, it is not a funding, it is not a budget issue, it is not a local tax dollar problem. That, to me, is the problem.
I would also like to point out that it, it has been mentioned several times in the past, and it was also mentioned at the last public hearing, that people have expressed frustrations over the G C Holly history, and how it just keeps, seems, it seems to keep being moved, or adjusted, or forgotten, or whatever. And I think the thing that I know, for me personally, I'm not from here, but yet I can still appreciate and understand, you know, the significance of that land and what occurred and, and all of that. And, and I, I mean, if it were up to me, we would have our $40 million, stick a brand new middle school on that property and, and keep it the way, you know, keep it. But, yeah, given the situation that we're in, we can't do that. However, I think going forward, we need to always keep that history rich and at the forefront for this county, because it is important, and it is, it's crucial to, you know, the southern end of the county and part of their identity as well. So, kind of as we continue to go forward, I just want people to understand that I'm frustrated with the lack of care and the lack of resources that were put into that school to put it in the position that it is currently in, because I think it's deplorable, to be honest. The location is amazing, and it's just, what, what was done to it is horrible. So, I want people to understand that it's not about forgetting that school and forgetting that history, it's not about that at all. Like, if it were up to me, we would be putting that school and its history in the limelight as much as possible. So, I just want to make sure that the community knows that going forward.
I would agree with her.
I have been around a while, and I've seen schools open, and I've seen schools closed right here in Granville County. And I've never had a school closed that the people that was in that school didn't feel like we were taking their baby away from them. And whenever we do this, I mean, those are the things that we have to consider. When we open new schools, everybody is excited and want to go When we open new schools, everybody is excited and want to go to them. When we closing jobs, that thing happens. But the, the idea from my perspective is that, and, you know, people talk about the history of Holly. And I've been living in this county for a long time. And there's always been that problem that some people, some, some people throw money at some things and some don't. And Holly has been one of those things that it sort of fell through the cracks on a lot of occasions. And now is at a point where we need to do what we need to do about it. And we could sit here and I could talk about the history of it for the next hour, you know, the man that the school's name after was the assistant pastor of my church for 40 years. So, I mean, I know about it, but that doesn't change the fact that today in '23, it's in bad shape and the students need to be out of it, period. And that's where I am with it. There is going to be, whatever we do here, somebody's not going to be happy. There are going to be some things that students and teachers and parents are going to wish we had better facilities. I mean, there's going to always be those problems. And I'm not in a position, I feel like, to keep this can down the road any further. Having said that, I'm going to make a motion that we close Creedmore Elementary as an elementary school, move Holly students to that school. And I know it's going to cost something and I'm not going down that road. We need to do what we need to do, we need to pay whatever we need to pay for it to happen. That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor to close Creedmore Elementary School of the Arts and move these students that would attend Holly for the next school year to that location. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Do we want a voice vote or want to go around the table?
Your call.
I say let's go around the table. Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Ms. LeBret?
Yes.
Dr. Lancy?
Yes.
Dr. Frederick?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Anderson?
No.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
The motion passes. One thing I'd like to say is, one of the things that Dr. Frederick mentioned and of course, what Dr. Peace, as Mr. Peace said, we have to do something now, but at the same time, we do need to continue to look forward. The growth is coming, we don't know when and we don't know exactly where and we don't know how fast. But do keep in mind this board or whatever future board is going to have to do, and that is to stay ahead of the curve a little bit because even if someone showed up with a whole pot of money today, you're looking at about a two-year period of time to get a middle school built or maybe longer. So we are going to need to see how this population goes and it's such time that we have to do that or the next board or whatever board that we are prepared for it and plan for it.
Ms. Williams, did you pass your vote? What was your vote? I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm sorry. It's, I think it's an emotional decision for all of us. Again, I think the staff and the children and the parents can be assured that this board will do everything it can in cooperation with our administration to make the transition as smooth as possible and we're committed to that. Any other comments?
I have a question. Because, you know, I'm, I'm always concerned about what the administration can do with the decisions we make. And I think we need to be made aware of whatever problems or concerns they have. They might not be able to do it today, but now the decision, the decision has been made, I think it's sort of up to them to decide. Or we make decisions and they do the work, really. But I, I just want to make sure that they, that we understand that they have to do the work. Therefore, if they have some things that they need for us to do, we need to pay attention to it. Thank you.
Let me add to that. I think you, well, I want to say that it's probably we have all schools to be closed. HR get, they're going to make sure that we can transfer teachers to the next school, you know, things of that nature. I guess those processes and procedures probably to make sure they are defined and made clear when you're trying to get the teachers a place for another year and things of that nature. So be a smooth transition, less anxiety going to a school for upcoming school year.
Absolutely. Superintendent McLean, do you have any comments you'd like to make in response to that?
We will thank you all. We will do everything in our power to do exactly as you've said, Madam Chairwoman. Mr. Peace, we hear you, we will make this process as smooth as possible for our employees and our families and our students. We will be very mindful of the difficulty of this decision. At the present, it is probably extremely important that all of our employees know, especially our employees at Cradle Elementary School and Holly Middle School. I'm sorry, at Creedmore Elementary School, I'm sorry, Creedmore Elementary School and Holly Middle School, that we should have a place for absolutely everyone. There is no reason for anyone to feel they need to leave the family. And I want to say that publicly because there should be a place for everyone as we go through this transition. We don't want anyone to feel they need to leave the family. I think that is probably the most important thing to say.
Absolutely.
The next most important thing to say to our families and to our babies is you are the most important thing, the most important people in this entire process. You don't need to leave the family either. We want to take very good care of you. So we are going to begin the processes necessary so that other decisions can be made and pushed down. So, Mr. Peace, thank you for saying that. This allows us to begin our work and it is hard work and you're right, we won't have answers tomorrow, but this is, there is a lot of work to do. So just thank you and I just felt the need to say those two things because the people are the most important parts of this work.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
One more, one more thing I'd just like to get off my chest here is that, you know, we have a lot of vacancies now.
Yes.
And I think, you know, for the administration, from the administration's point of view, if there are positions out there that you can tell somebody next week where they could be and what they could be doing as a result of this, it might be helpful. I mean, I don't know what you're going to think about that. I mean, I might be sort of putting the cart before the horse, but, you know, but that won't be the first time I've done that either, so, you know.
I think we would have loved to have done that anyway. I know we can't do that next time. But, Mr. Perry, is there, there anything you'd like to add there?
We'll work through this process with the Creedmore staff and that family.
Maybe that's who I should have been talking to.
They have, they do have placements for next year. We do want to guarantee that these individuals would have first priority for placements for next year.
That's right.
We'll work with each and every one of them.
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
I have one thing I just want to add. I know this is a little backhanded on the back of the vote that we just made, but I do want to thank and make sure that I give credit to the folks that came out and spoke at, and I guess in favor of Creedmore last week. Something that I grew up within and was really important to me growing up was the community culture around the schools and stuff and you can never fault them for how much passion they had about, you know, about their program. One of the things that's tearing us all up is the fact that we're, you know, because of a lack of options, we have to make this hard choice that's going to affect them. So I just want to implore any people that are affected by this, please do not give up on the community, please do not give up on the county, please keep fighting for what you're passionate about. That's not lost on us and I don't want this choice and decision to put out any fires of passion about supporting Creedmore as a whole as a city and the Granville County Public Schools.
Well said. I would have been very disappointed had those teachers and those people not have come because it showed they cared about their children. They were very passionate and it was most appreciated and heartfelt.
Yes.
If there's no other business, do we need to?
Just a few dates.
Maybe just the dates?
Yes, may have just a few dates.
Okay. On February 6th, we will have the Board of Education regular meeting here at the Mary Potter Center for Education at 6:00 PM. February 17th is Legislative Day. Granville Central High School will start at 8:45 AM. And I think our legislative group is going to be with us, Senator DeBode, Representative Winslow and Representative Sossman. We're excited for them to come and I think they're excited to come. On February 23rd, we have a Student Winner Leadership Summit here at Mary Potter Center for Education. And I think we had something similar last year. Could you just briefly say what that is so our new people will know?
Absolutely. We, all of you are invited to come. We started the year sort of blending together our book work and we, we hope to have the author come, if not, we hope to have the books here for the children because we began the year with a book and at the end of the book, there was something very special about an egg. And the author challenged the children with a question about what happened with the egg. Well, the author finished that book and we are going to purchase that book for the youngsters so they can find out about this egg. This was a part of their leadership experience. The author might be a little too expensive to get, but they will certainly have the book and they may have to hear from one of us. How about that? But we'd love to have all of you come and help them with the second half of their year as they work on their leadership priorities. You all are already assisting with that with the word of the month, the leadership traits. We're sort of generated as a part of that leadership work. These are the students who carry it out in their buildings. So we will have a few schools here and the others are done remotely in the school buildings themselves. So do join us with that if you can, right here.
What time is that?
We start, the official start time will be between 8:30 and 9:00 AM and we will try to finish up around noon that day. You don't have to stay the whole time, but it'd be great if you could drop in.
Okay, if we have no further items, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, people.